Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to call the county commissioner meeting for December 11th at this time. And it's a very powerful to have a invitation by a city board member and then the invitation, then the flag leads to the flag. During this time of our prayer, you're welcome to join us in this prayer. You're welcome to use it for your own prayer if you like, or you're welcome to use it for a moment of silence. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Richard Ripson to lead us in that invitation.
I would love to follow up with Sir, we've received so many good questions, but thank you for this day, for life, health, and strength. Thank you for this season of Thanksgiving, thank you for our Justin George, to help us all to remember, Lord, that every day you give us is a day of Thanksgiving. Let us be of ourself before you and share that one with others. Bless us in all that we say in this day, we might be a pity you as we serve others. In the name of Christ, we pray, amen.
The holy and blessed, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now moving to item number four on the agenda, which is the approval of a vintage. Last month in November, we had a regulation on the 4th of November, and then our regular second being on the 18th of November. We should about attend to those minutes. I would entertain any corrections or additions to the minutes at this time, or motion to approve, whichever you see fit. Have a motion by Commissioner Outlaw, or by Secretary, or by any question on that motion? All in favor of motion, let me know and say aye. Any opposed by a like sign, and then approved and thanked my clerk. We're now on item number five on our agenda. And according to our will of speakers, on October 8th, at the first meeting in December, the first order of business, approval of the vintage is to approve the election, or have an election for the chair and vice chair of this vote, which is what we'll do at this time. Then we also would appoint a clerk and a county attorney for the next year, or the two years, also according to documents that I have here before. So at this time, I'd like to ask our attorney, Dean Colonel, if he would decide over this portion of the meeting, and I'll turn it over to you now at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning.
As the chairman has explained, now is the time to elect the new chairman for the upcoming year. I will enter down the motion to the election of the chairman of the Nash County Board of Commissioners beginning today.
Mr. Attorney General, I would like to offer a motion that must elaborate his service as our chair for the year 2020.
Good afternoon. Second.
Second motion.
I have a motion, Ms. Ripson, the second by Mr. Bellfield. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, always in favor of motion, signify by saying aye. Does it pose by silver sign? May I ask you, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, gentlemen. What's that, Mr. Ripson?
John.
Thank you, ma'am. I really appreciate that. At this time, we did elect a vice chair, and I would hope to afford a nomination for the vice chair for the year 2020, as well as starting today.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate one out of the five chairs for the year 2020.
They have a nomination for Commissioner Outlaw, vice chair. Is there a second to that motion? Have a second, Commissioner Williams. Any questions on that motion, or any more nominations? All in favor of nomination, let me know and say aye. Any opposed by a like sign? Motion carries as well. And then, let me just preface all, I'd like to thank my sister for the chair again. Appreciate it. Thank you. I won't get out of shape again, but I do appreciate your vote. All right, we will now move on then to item number eight, which is public comment. And during this time, anyone that's here today who wishes to speak to the board commissioners about any item that does not belong on the agenda, is welcome to do that. There was a sign-up period out prior to the meeting starting, but if you happen to get in that and you were here today to speak, we would allow once you did sign up first to speak, then I would call anyone else that happened to come in and missed the sign-up period. This morning, we had one person that had signed up as a D.D. Fordus from Moamire Way National Carolina, and be glad to hear from you this morning, sir. Did I get the last name right?
You were pretty close, Mr. Chairman, it's Fordus.
Fordus, thank you, sir.
That's it.
Good morning, everybody. Did you name that address?
That's it. For the record, my name is Gilroy Patrick Fordus, and I live at 4722 Moamire Way in Nashville, North Carolina.
I recognize that, I follow that.
If nothing else, the voice pens could give me away. Some of you I know, some of you I've known for a while, some of you I don't. Good morning, and I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. My purpose in coming up here to speak is, on the subject that has been addressed before at the public comments, I took the time to review those comments on the county channel. And a little background for those that don't know me, I spent 30 years in law enforcement. The overwhelming majority of my adult life, both in local and state, having retired six years ago, and moving into the private sector. Operating a business, LED lighting business based in Rockville, North Carolina, and I chose to make Nash County my home. In keeping up in the news articles, and various discussions, one of the topics that came to me as a point of interest is the repeating comments and the discussions regarding the detentions here in Nash County, the jail. The escapes and the injuries that I read about. Recently, I read that there were two inmates that were injured to the degree that we had to lifelike them. As I think about that and the costs that are incurred, because I assure you, I'm not physically conservative individual, I think about the costs that are incurred to the taxpayers for having to fly these folks out. I think about the level of violence that has grassed by our community. I realize that there have been 17 murders in the city of Rockville this year. 17 murders. I think there's around four in Nash County. Then the sheriff came, Sheriff Stone came and spoke at the Rurking Club in Moamire, not this month, but last month, and did a presentation on the operation of the sheriff's office, and naturally, that conversation led into the conditions and the discussions that are taking place at the jail. He did a very good job, and the members of the Rurking Club there seemed to receive the comments very well. I also have taken the opportunity to have discussions with Sheriff Stone regarding these after his comments there, the Rurking Club. You see, the jail in me is a facility that members of the community are aware that it exists, but it's not something they want to think about during their everyday lives. The only thing they want to make sure is that facility is safe and secure, and maintains security, and keeps the people inside, inside, to keep the community safe, keep the community protected. And yet, and I read, and it's kind of inconceivable to me, that we have a facility in Nash County that is incapable of housing all of the inmates in Nash County, and that we have to ship 50 or 60 of them out to be housed in other counties. That's probably $50 a day. Math was not my strong suit, but at $50 a day and 50 inmates, that's $2,500 a day that could be used for other purposes and other benefits here in Nash County. That's going to other counties' tax coffers and general funds to operate their facilities. Then I realized, and part of Sheriff Stone's discussion, is that there's no ability to lock down that facility. Having supervised and put a lot of folks in jail over 30 years, and visiting probably 20 jails, 25 jails throughout North Carolina during the course of my career, some of them were abysmal, and some of them were standard of the art. I can tell you as a person that put people in the jail, when I would hand those over to detention facilities and detention officers, I promise you, I had no desire at all to ever be a jailer. God bless them, I don't know how they do it. There's no method, no ability to lock down the facility, no method for classifications. All these inmates here, according to Sheriff Stone, are housed in open pause, and that doesn't mean, that means that you have these murderers and these violent offenders, and they're housed with people that, you know, perhaps made a stupid decision and find themselves incarcerated, had a momentary lack of judgment, and find themselves incarcerated, that would never, ever have stepped inside that facility, but yet they're in their house with violent criminal offenders. There's an inability to directly supervise the inmates there. Then I'm told that these female detention officers, because of the close proximity of them doing their walkthroughs, and the ability for the inmates to reach through the bars and grab and rope, the female detention officers. Who in the world would want to, who in the world would want to work in conditions like that? It's already bad enough, no one to turn in their weapon, but the very concept that you have female jails, they can't control the inmates, and as they walk by, they're solid, physically, broken. And let's be honest with you, you have bodily fluids thrown on them, and we wonder why we have a retention problem. No shower facilities there at the intake, so you know these folks oftentimes that are locked up, were not brought out of the most hygiene conditions. So you're bringing folks into a facility that have bodies and other things, and there's no way to process them or clean them, and we live in this ridiculous society. So all we're doing is opening ourselves, because it's in the public domain, it's in the public record now. So all we're doing is opening the county up to civil lawsuits that are going to cost us over and over and over again, and if you follow the national news and use another states, you see this and you read about it continuously. And then, you know, I read, and it seems that we've, you know, I read in the telegram that the county has hired an architectural firm, we're trying to figure out what we can do to make it better. We spent the money to hire this firm, but then I read and also see in Sheriff's comments that he had the NIC come in and do an assessment, and I would hope that we don't have a duplication. I would hope we don't have a duplication, and I would hope that the National Institute of Corrections was professional enough to both assess the operations of the facility as well as the facility itself. You see, the operation of the facility, the operational side may be separated by which office has oversight, but at the end of the day, the operation and the facility go hand and hand. They go hand and hand, they're in set as a practical working condition. I understand the jail was constructed, you know, built in the 70s and had mandated changes in the 90s that were mandated because of jail reviews and jail inspections, but at some point in time, if that facility isn't adequate, if it is no longer able to meet the requirements as mandated by the state federal guidelines, then maybe we need to take a step back and figure out what we need to do. You see, I look at that, and I realize that sometimes, you know, to use that little metaphor, that little analogy, if you put lids in your pig just because of the change of color of the lids there, doesn't mean that it's still not dead. We need to be open-minded. We need to understand what needs the county wants. We need to understand that we have employees in there that are working in conditions, trying to maintain, or in chaos. I don't think we should keep having to send out our inmates and pay other sheriff's offices $50 a day to house inmates, because the facility that we currently have is incapable of doing that. You know, the other thing that bothers me is the ability, you know, they set fires in there, these folks sitting there 24 hours a day trying to figure out a way to tear something up, trying to figure out a way to escape. There's now mandated that we have the ability to classify inmates before they come in to a facility, and when they enter this facility. And my understanding, and having this conversation with Sheriff Stone, is that Nash County does not have the ability to classify these inmates, and once again, that's just going to open us up to lawsuits.
Fordus, we generally respect our comments for the five minutes. Are you getting close?
I got it this morning at 6:00 a.m. making my bullet points, and I'm down to my last bit. Okay, thank you, sir. You're very welcome. Thank you for reminding me. The other thing, my daughter comes in from out of town, she enjoys coming into downtown Nashville when she comes to visit me. I happened to be in Nashville the day we had the escape, I had no idea what had happened, but what bothers me, and I've spoken of this before, if one of those inmates, in that desperate attempt to escape, had assaulted my daughter or tried to take her vehicle, that bothers me to my core. That bothers me to my core, and it could very well happen. You know, I chose to move here and live here on purpose. I enjoy living here. I understand that this situation will mandate at some point in time expenditures, and nobody wants to spend money, but I'm just asking that we be open-minded, we be thoughtful, and we remember the community that each and every one of us want to serve and protect, which I did for so many years. That's the end of my comments, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would be speaking in the public comments at this time? Scene number one, we will move now to item number nine, which is a public hearing. With general rezoning request, 163 acres can hold Stoney Hill Church, Whitley, and Chapman Road, from R40 to St. Pepperidge to RA 30, St. Pepperidge District. Mr. Tyson.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
This is a general rezoning, as the chairman said, if you will note on the screen, you have the area photo on the left, and it's on the map on the right, at the same location. The subject property is four tracts of land outlined in red on both maps, three on the north side of Stony Hill Church Road, and then one smaller one on the southern side of Stony Hill Church Road. All four tracts are owned by LNF Farms LLC, they total approximately 163 acres. They're located between Whitley Road to the west, which is here, and West Orange Church Road, which is just a little further to the east on this side of the picture. The site is northeast of the town bay and the area known as the Green Pond Community. As you can see, from the green color on the zoning map to the right, it is currently zoned R40. However, it's located immediately adjacent to an approximately 24 acre tract shown in orange, right about here, which was rezoned by this board back on October 7th, from R40 to RA 30, at the request of the same property owner. On November 18th of last month, the Nash County Planning Board took a look at that particular piece of property and approved this preliminary subdivision sketch plan for the first two phases of what is called the Williams Ridge Subdivision. This is a cluster subdivision development, and so even though this property is zoned RA 30, and we normally have to have lot sizes of 30,000 square feet, they are allowed to have lot sizes as low as 20,000, which you'll note, many of these lots are designed at the 20,000 square foot level, provided that all the lot area that would normally have been included in those lots is placed into common area open space. And it's a little bit light on here, but there's a rectangular lot right through here that accommodates all the individual lot areas that would be included normally in those 20 lots. And so this area is set aside to account for the smaller size of these lots. You'll note that all of these lots are along the existing public road rights of way, you have Juniper Road to the west, Stony Hill Church Road to the north, and Chapman Road to the east, and there's a large tract that is left for future development, which would most likely require an internal road to be constructed in order for those lots to be subdivided. So that plan was approved by the planning board on November 18th. You might recall that the property owner, LNF Farms, had previously requested that the previously rezoned tract and all the tracts in red be rezoned to R20 CU, medium density residential. However, that request was withdrawn back in May prior to proceeding to a public hearing. Subject property is mostly undeveloped, primarily used for agricultural production, with the exception of a couple of existing residential dwellings. It's also subject to some watershed regulation rules, that means no lots can be subdivided with less than 20,000 square feet, regardless of the county's zoning decision, because those are state standards that are imposed on us. Subject property is adjacent to two existing subdivisions, you have the Wyatt Fuel Subdivision to the north up here, and then the Glover Oaks Subdivision, which is on the west side of Whitley Road along here. Both of those were developed in accordance with the current 40,000 square foot zoning standard, so all those lots are 40,000 square feet or greater. This particular rezoning request has been submitted by the owner, LNF Farms, and it would rezon this additional 163 acres from the green R40 to match the orange RA 30, which is already been established here. There are two primary impacts that the approval of rezoning would have on this property. If you're following along in the report and your agenda, those impacts are highlighted in yellow. Number one, it would of course reduce the minimum lot size from 40,000 square feet down to 30,000 square feet, which would result in about a 33% or one-third increase in the number of lots that could be subdivided. So rezoning the property will increase the potential residential density. If you were to divide out at a current level of density, it is allowed, or divide out into individual lots under the proposed, the proposed would result again in 33% more lots, or about one-third more lots than if you left it zoned R40. The second primary impact has to do with the land uses that could be developed there. The proposed RA 30 zoning is more restrictive than the current R40, and it would eliminate nine individual land uses that are currently allowed under the current zoning, but would not be allowed under the new zoning. This is an excerpt on the screen from the list of permitted uses that are allowed in both zones. Everyone highlighted in yellow is something that will be allowed today, but would not be allowed under the proposed zoning. The most notable one, of course, is double-wide manufactured homes, which can no longer be developed. The other ones listed are rural family occupations, nursing or convalescent homes, soil farms, non-hazardous solid waste disposal collection sites, public utility fuel offices, water treatment plants, horse shows, and turkey shoots. And of course, if the property were rezoned, it would continue to be eligible for the cluster development option, meaning that the lots could go down as small as 20,000, as long as the normal lot area is set aside in this area common area for open space. The two tools that we use to evaluate a rezoning are land development plan and spot zoning concerns. The land development plan, the request is consistent with the plan for a number of reasons that are outlined in the report. Number one, the plan designates this whole area as suburban growth area, you can see that in the yellow color that covers the entire map area. The plan explicitly supports rezoning property within this area to the proposed RA 30 zoning district when public water service is available, and when the soil conditions will accommodate the installation of home site septic systems. The subject property has access to Nash County Public Water Service via existing 4-H water lines along Stony Hill Church Road, Whitley Road, and Chapman Road. Furthermore, the Public Utilities Department has previously determined that the existing water system has sufficient capacity to accommodate the residential development at the proposed density. And then, of course, the soil conditions of the property, as observed by our Environmental Health Division, appear generally sandy, well-drained, and favorable for the installation of septic systems. The higher density that will be allowed by the rezoning is consistent with the plan's recommendation that will be to accommodate significant residential growth in this area, and we've already touched on the nine land uses that would no longer be permitted there. However, the land development plan is only an advisory document, and the board is not obligated to approve the request simply because it's consistent with the plan. Therefore, you can still deny it if you determine the request is not reasonable, not in the public interest, or incompatible with the specific proposed location at this time. Spot zoning would not be a concern, because this would be an expansion of the previously established RA 30, which is shown in orange. And so that's already been established by the board, and this would simply be an expansion. So in this particular case, spot zoning is not something that we need to be concerned with. The technical review committee considered this request back on October 31st, and recommended approval based on its technical determination that the request is reasonable, it's in the public interest, consistent with the recommendations of the plan, and not spot zoning. However, the TRC also identified two questions regarding the timing of the request that it suggested for consideration by both the planning board and the board commissioners. The first question is whether or not the previously rezoned tract here shown in orange should be further developed before the board decides to expand the zoning further. You saw previously in my presentation that a partial plan for the subdivision of that lot has been approved by the planning board, but one question the TRC raised is, is that enough, or would the board prefer to see further development? And I think it all depends on the board's attitude about that previously established rezoning. Is this an experiment for this area, in which case you want to see the results in order to judge whether it is time to expand, or do you view it as just the first step in a sort of inevitable transition of this area to a higher density? Depending on how the board answers that question, will probably determine whether you need to see further development on this tract, or if you're ready to expand that zone. The second question is, if you are ready to expand that zone, keep in mind that you could expand it to fill the entire proposed area, or it is divided up into four individual parcels. And so the board has the opportunity to approve an expansion for just one or a few of those parcels without necessarily having to commit to the entire area. So you have some flexibility there. Both of those considerations are non-technical considerations, and so the TRC left the answers to those questions to the discretion of both the planning board and to this board. The planning board heard that recommendation, as well as this whole report, on November the 18th. There were no members of the public other than the applicant present at the meeting to address the board with regard to this request, and the planning board voted unanimously to recommend consistency statement A, which is in support of approval of the request, and then they recommended approval of rezoning the entire subject property to the RA 30 zoning district. This is a two-motion process, as you're certainly accustomed to. Your first motion is to adopt a consistency statement. You have one prepared in the report for approval, and then you have one that is also prepared for denial. However, if you choose the one for denial, we will need to craft a very brief statement explaining why, and I will stand ready to assist you with that if we get to that point. The exact motion is to actually approve or deny the map amendment, and you have three options there. You can approve the entire property to be rezoned to RA 30, you can approve a portion of the property that you specified to be rezoned to RA 30, or of course, you could deny the request and leave the property zoned R40 as it is now. Mr. Cecil Williams, the prospective developer, is present today to represent the application here in the public hearing. And before we move on to that, I'd be glad to take any questions that you have on the staff report.
Any questions? The board members, just down.
I'm reading here for, and help you to understand this, is this because if it remains the same, it says property will remain eligible for the cluster development option, meaning that it could potentially be subdivided into residential lots as small as 20,000 square feet?
Correct.
And that is if it remains R40?
If it remains R40, they can cluster down to 30,000. If you rezon it RA 30, they could cluster down to 20,000. So it's eligible for clustering, but when you change the zoning, it can cluster a little further.
I got a question.
So this might be looking at right here is a way to propose lots or set a name for the pitch you've already rezoned. And I'm a little upset with myself for R thirty with the cluster factor in there. I believe lots in Eagle one are thirty thousand square feet. I thought at some point in time, I thought when we did that, we were looking at lots that were going to be thirty thousand square feet. But I understand the cluster factor, factor in. Well, I'm just letting you know, and the land development plans are, I'm concerned that it's changing. Because I would never intend to vote on rezoning for thirty thousand square feet that allows for down to twenty with the clustering factor. That just makes, I don't have a responsibility for it. But I see one thirty thousand square foot along this twenty five.
Other questions or comments?
Adam, I have one question. When you showed us the amount of open space, what do we have in place that allows for the dictation of maintenance of those facilities that we move forward? I would go.
So before the, before those lots that are shown could be recorded, the developer would have to submit a, some documents establishing an owners' association. And within that, it would have to accept the conveyance of the common area. And they would have to, the owners' association would have to accept not just the maintenance responsibilities, but the tax burden of that property as well. And so that agreement would come to me before they proposed to record the lots, and then it would be sent to the county attorney for review.
I guess a misunderstanding. I thought that some of these lots had to be some wet there. That wouldn't perk or something that would allow those lots to cluster. But evidently, that's not it, because all these now perk. So there's no plan here to do anything but put lots around there due to root.
Sometimes a piece of property that has a very obvious area that won't perk for septic systems, it lends itself to that becomes the obvious area if you're going to do cluster development for it to be the cluster common area, because you can't do anything with it otherwise. In this case, there's not such an obvious portion of this tract that would be set aside for wetlands or stormwater purposes.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about the open space. Is that open space allowed to be used for roads? Or must it be maintained in green space or otherwise? And is that also required to be mowed and maintained? Or is it allowed to be grown?
It has to remain as open space that is vegetated. There is the provision where they can put some shared facilities, like say if the property owners' association wanted to put a picnic shelter or a shared mailbox area. But no homes or roads can be developed on that property. In terms of mowing it, in my experience, the county has not imposed any particular rules about specific mowing requirements or things like that. Mostly, they just put a prohibition on the development of homes or accessory buildings. And of course, it has to remain open and accessible to all the residents, because that's essentially the part of their yard that they were owed under the current zoning. And so they need to be able to take advantage of all that area.
Other questions?
Yeah, my first question involves water access. I understand that the applicant on the previously approved property wanted to run parallel five pipes with the five lots, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, instead of going to the front of each lot and having a tap and run five parallel lines from Stonehill Church Road. What's the status of that request?
So on this map here, the lots along Stonehill can tap directly into existing lines, and the lots along Chapman can tap directly in. And there was a proposal, as you described, to have individual lines that come off of Stonehill to serve each of these lots along Juniper, which does not have a rule line. However, that proposal was denied by the Nash County Public Utilities Department. And the developer is therefore planning to install a two-inch water line in the road right away to go down the road.
Great, thank you. The common's area, you said there would be a required property owners' association?
Right. The county doesn't necessarily, in most cases, require a subdivision power owners' association. But when there's a common area that must be owned by a corporate entity like that, then the ordinance does trigger the requirement that they establish owners' association.
And do those covenants have to be filed at the same time as the plat?
Yes. They have to be pre-reviewed by the county attorney and then filed simultaneously with the final subdivision plat.
Okay. And you said that the county does not have a mowing requirement. Is that, we haven't enforced it, or?
I'm not aware of that.
There's nothing that requires it. So if the common's area, which has to be vegetated, goes two years or however long without being cut, there is nothing that?
Right now, it would just be the pressure from the members of the owners' association to make it happen.
In Nash County's jurisdiction, how many similar subdivisions are there with common areas?
Two that I'm aware of. One of which, the common area is mostly a pollen. And in the other one, the majority of the common area is not just common area, but it is stormwater easement, which means that it can't be mowed. It has to be maintained in a natural vegetated state, and you can't do anything to it. So both of those are kind of unique in that they're not just a grassy field.
Is there anything that prevents us, and this probably is a question prevents, putting a notation on the plat that says that the common areas must be regularly maintained and mowed?
I think we have to have some rules allowed once we do that.
Okay, no further questions?
All right, either one of them. Any questions? We're in this time. Who's got a picture of the lawyers there, sir? Second by Commissioner Richardson and Taylor Field at the same time. Any questions on that motion? All in favor of the motion, let me know on the say and opt. Any votes by the lightside? Ladies and gentlemen, now in the public hearing, we're here for anyone that is present today who wishes to speak for or against this rezoning request. We would ask for you to come forward at this time, state your name and address, and the board would be glad to hear any comments that you have to call in consideration of this request. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Morning, Mr. Williams.
Good morning. Boy, everyone, this turkey is gone. Can I answer some of the questions there about the open space? In the ordinance, this is very unique in that this is a completely open field. And there is no trees or anything that is interfering with it. Anyway, in the ordinance, it says that you can, it can be used to protect stands of trees, and it describes a variety of reasons and a variety of things that you can protect, including wetlands, which is, so people have plenty of wetlands on the outside. Throw it back in there. And we're going to put, one of our builders requires to put some playground equipment and recreational facilities, like a picnic, cover picnic area, and what have you in this subdivision. It is what we intended, that we're not going to let it grow up and what have you. But I realize that. So anyway, I presented, the people have emailed, I sent them some, oh, looky there. I'll show you on a picture right quick. This is, this sure is showing you where we are. This is Jordan Road. This is subdivision that we, we had approved probably almost a year ago. And this is some construction that's being built. A greenhouse, it's a normal picture, I'll show you there. More houses and stuff is going on down the long way on Jordan Road. This is going on as we speak. So it takes, and I mean, this other one about the section we aren't going to rezonate approval. My engineers working with the county now to get all the teams crossed and the eyes dotted to start that space of the subdivision. Interior lots, as soon as we get that recorded, we're going to start with the interior lots. But from the time we start trying to get a road designed and completed before we can start building houses on it, it'll be probably a year. So, and we've got, I've just got emails about this one as I've been doing the meeting. Some of the people that have looked at the lots that are signing letters of intent and trying to get in as quickly as they can so we can get one few lots that are all available there. So they'll be ready to step in and purchase lots just as soon as we're able to get a recorded plat. And I mean, we're just trying to get some lots to get builders, and we're going to completely finish building that subdivision. And the rest of the subdivision, the Chapman Road there is a dirt road. And I don't think the state has any, I don't, we're going to be the one that's going to have to widen that, fix that road in paint. So one of the subject properties is on the other side of Chapman Road that will benefit from the rezoning as well. And I'm just here to answer any questions.
I guess, I have a question.
I guess my big question is, why don't you lot stay twenty thousand square foot lots when you were looking thirty thousand square foot lots?
Sir, we, it's not because we're wet or any reason to do it. That's the per, that's the exact reason for doing that, is they're not wet. And we can, and the twenty thousand square foot perk. And in my personal opinion, thirty or forty, this plan was previously required to have forty thousand square foot lots until the forty thousand square foot rule died in the DWQ or whoever was looking at that. Then we petitioned the board to remove the forty thousand square foot from the ordinance. The commission here did that back some time ago. And now that allows for smaller lots down to the twenty thousand square foot and just stops at twenty thousand square foot, because it's, as Mr. Tyson said, that's the regulations say you can't go lower than twenty thousand. But the exact reason for doing twenty thousand square feet is because the land is so good for septic tanks that you can do twenty thousand square feet pretty much across the board with no problems with drainage issues.
But that, that extra ten thousand square foot per lot got to be sent out of that here.
Yes.
So if that?
Well, but that, that's.
If we're using it in the lot instead of sitting the side or something, some of them might be maintaining, it's going to grow up weeds and trees and.
My view on that is that you got, you look at that thirty thousand square foot lot. I'm looking at a twenty thousand square foot lot. And everybody's looking, I'm taking ten thousand out of this person's yard, and I'm putting over here, we're going to have a community yard that's going to be much larger, where they can do other things that they want to. Such as they're going to put basketball goals up, they want to put a little cycle deal in. And the homeowners association is set up, and homeowners today wants these extra amendments.
With the zoning that we did, what, over a month and a half ago?
Yes, sir.
What progress have you made in relation to the building within that R thirty?
Our engineers have filed a report, have filed proper documentation with the planning board to get the final plat approvals, commissioner, I mean, the commissioner, planning board approved that at the last planning board meeting. And we're getting, like I said, we're going to get the final approval from the county so we can put together a recordable plat. And we have builders already have signed, signed letters of intent, want to purchase the lots that will be available, with other people wanting to sign letters of intent for lots that we don't have yet. And that's what we're trying to do now, is get more land approved so we can try to get ahead of the demand on the lots on the subdivision.
Other questions?
Yes, sir. You made reference to a final plat that, you know, your proposal of how you will build this tract out. The map right here, is that pretty similar?
Yes, that is a map. That is a map, and we've got the road, that's key roads, which on, on Juniper Road, you mentioned the problem with the water line. And I don't know where, what the water line there, engineers now have sent to the county for their approval to put in the water line extension to cover those lots. And that's going to probably take sixty more days to get that done. But here's a water line on Chapman, on Chapman Road. But all those lots have been spoken for. And like I said, to put the interior road in and get that, all the permits and things that have to go with the permits and get their construction done, it'll take twelve months to get all of that.
Right, well, that was what I was getting to with my question, is the final, what the final product would look like?
That's what the final thing, one of the two would look like. The final final part would be the homes inside. But the lot can't, can't afford the person's land and not, you know, for the interior lots that are built, that fully as you can. So that's, that's all. We've been with the public, but we're just going to take twelve months. And who knows what's going to be going on after that, with the election. Who knows what all happens after elections and so forth? It's, it's, it's nothing that, that's things we got to deal with every day. But anyway, I'm here to hope we can get this approved.
Other questions?
I have a couple of questions. You find, you, I know this is about rezoning of a different piece of property, but we've seen, it seems clear that several of the commissioners were not, as was I, not, clear that we were going to get twenty thousand square foot lots, except for one, using the cluster method, which, of course, the ordinance is proper. My question is, and I've been a real estate broker for over forty years. Family's been in real estate for seventy years. So I understand the concept of building lots on existing roads. So I have two questions. Chapman Road, is that a state road?
Yes, it's a dirt road.
Why did you say you would have to?
Because it's currently a dirt road, and I don't live with the state budget. And we were talking to people, get the state down, is who's going to put the approval song?
Was that, was that road in existence in nineteen seventy-four?
I'm sure of it.
Well, then, it's the state's responsibility.
To me, it would be.
The second question is, if you went to thirty, and this might be a question for you or you, if you went to thirty thousand square feet in a future plat, different piece of property, would you be able to get the same lots on the highway, on the road frontage as he is getting?
Yes.
So you could still get thirty thousand square foot lots and have twenty lots as you have it right here?
Yes.
The lots would not, the lots would, could be the same width.
Same width, road, road.
But they have to be deeper under the thirty thousand than they would under, has to be a football field deep. But the width does not change.
So in order to make it thirty thousand square feet and it would be long lots, you would have to extend the width of a lot. So that would cut down on your, the number of lots you can do under this. Since remainder of track. Um, since remainder of track for future development, what is the access point for that future development?
Chapman Road.
Chapman Road pass lot number 20?
Correct.
Okay. Um, okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lein. Anyone else in the audience today wish to speak on this rezoning, either for argument? Seeing no one come forward, and in the same motion, closing public hearings this time, so we move our question to Congress there, sir. So I get, uh, Commissioner Wells, any questions on that motion? All in favor of motion, let me know on the say and I. Any opposed, file a like sign. Uh, just a couple of comments, uh... If, if I could, I want to make sure that board understands that we have reviewed recently, uh, the part about clusters, and we did remove clusters from some known category. The board at that time decided to leave it in.
Most versatile APG furniture from the most trusted brands in the industry.
So, I mean, wanted to go, it certainly would then define what we have recently adopted or re-adopted now. So, uh, I don't know what we thought that it would do, and I would personally agree that normally clusters, if you're in an area where you have some undesirable land that allows you to be more locked on the same acres even though you've got, will not hurt or you need to control or retention for any other reason. Uh, so I, I, I do see why some of our commissioners have an issue with what we see here versus maybe what we thought we could see. But it does meet what we have reached the approval, and, and willing that otherwise the staff wouldn't have recommended it, nor would the planning board have been able to approve. So I, I just want you to understand that what we got here is allowed and I would, is what we want. We really need to remember all these conversations that the board, because we've been looking at this whole thing over the next year, and that's the time to get it like the city board wants it to be. Uh, if we have something that I would, and it is allowed, I, I generally think we really ought to do our best to approve it, simply because we've gotten that I would, that puts us on a little bit shaky ground moving forward, if we don't, based on the court cases that I've seen over the years. So the whole key to what I'm trying to say is, we got to get the orders, and I was only laying the bone, like we really want Nash County to be developed over the next year. If we move forward this time, I hope you keep a note on all the comments that you have these public hearings about, and we very hope to move forward. But just an overall comment for the board, and I, uh, stop at this point, and, uh, I would just ask, will be played for the board or motions?
Mr. Chairman, if you'll comment?
Yes, sir.
This is the reason why we need to move quickly on our land, reviewing our total drain use to develop that plan.
I, I think we've made that very clear.
We can say if we're going to do it, but...
I, I think you might see us speed it up. Okay, oh, well, I, I was back up, let me speak to the matter, sir.
Um, during manager comments, I, I have three proposed dates for a work session that I will share with the board, and it can be moved up if y'all such.
And I agree, we really got to get this thing underway, but it, it didn't happen in 30 days, so I mean, we've got high some consultants, and it's just going to move along in a circle, then 12 months, I hope we can get it done, Mr. Tyson. But with that said, that we're at the point now, where we need to take action on this particular one, so identifying any motions that hold, or we should put forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, please.
Um, the previous track that we approved was approved as being built out as a subdivision and resolved for a subdivision. And at this point, that subdivision has not come to pass. Um, so with that said, um, once this comes to pass, um, I think we would like, I would like to take another look at this, but at this point, I would like to make the motion to approve consistency statement, um, B, for denial.
And, and would it be fair to say...
We, we need a reason, which I guess you just made, that how you put this on, satisfied you as far...
What I would suggest is that your motion would be that it's not reasonable, that the rezoning is not reasonable at this time until the previously rezoned track is further developed.
Correct, yes, sir.
And I'll say that movie.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, we have a subject of motion, any member that doesn't understand the motion?
Make sure you state it so everybody understands.
Okay.
Um, whatever, either, either you, Mr. Chairman, or, or Mr. Tyson.
Well, we're on the consistency statement, and what the motion is, is to approve the consistency statement, B. And reasonable denial, or as stated by Ms. Leggett, is that she wishes to see public development on the previously rezoned request, uh, that we have already approved, or 30. You have a question on motion?
I think, I think further expounding, but I think it's based, it's stated here as a TRC recommendation in order to demonstrate its compatibility with the surrounding area before it's expanded to include additional land.
All right, well, what we can do then is have the motion, Adam, say, as applicable to the TRC court that is put in the agenda for.
Right. If the rezoning do not be reasonable at this time until the previously rezoned track is further, further developed to demonstrate its compatibility with the surrounding area.
All fairly, have a motion, have a subject, any other discussion? All in favor of that motion, let me know on the say and I. Any opposed, file a like sign. That motion carries.
Now we need, uh, a second motion.
Oh, we have a consistency statement, I need a second motion, that would either, what really I'll have an option, uh, which is to deny rezoning. Move by Commissioner Collins, denied rezoning, is there a subject of that motion?
Second.
Second, uh, Commissioner Le, any questions on that motion? All in favor of motion, let me know on the say and I. Any opposed, file a like sign. If you don't, uh, need to deny this present time. We, if you have any questions on what we did, I guess it was pretty clear.
No, I don't, it wouldn't be possible, we could at least get the piece under Chapman Road, but everyone has to extend it. It could, we'd stake the work both sides, we could make the work both sides of the river.
I would say we need to submit that as a separate entity, but you're what the board said today, I, I really think they, uh, want to see public development on what we already have approved, but certainly you can submit, I don't know if there's a time restraint on when you can come back.
There is not.
There is not, so you could really resubmit that way, but we have been, uh, moving forward as we used to.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I had a clarifying question, just because I, just so I can advise the applicant. Um, the motion was that the board would like to see further development on the tracks on the screen first. Uh, is there a sense of what you would like to see before you would want to have this proposal ahead of, like, do you want the planning board to approve a plan that, that shows lots over the entirety of that track? Do you want those lots to be recorded? Do you want there to be houses to be built? Is there a sense of how far in the development process you'd like this to go before it comes back before you?
I, I don't know if we can really dictate that. Uh, Mr. Tyson, uh, I, I think it's just a matter, I, I think I know what the general intent of the board is, we, we should just see public development, and I think what we want to, or when we can, it is to have development on road lots only and everything else that, not for a long period of time, but I'm not sure that's what the board intended with recent public, but, uh, I believe that's by the thought we can link it to describe what, what will. But I would invite the applicant to talk to any board member about it, uh, that we should do, since it's not quite that big of a gray. All right, uh, while you're left, we'll move on to, uh, item number, uh, 10, which is a substantial extension for the disrepair permit, uh, for the transfer of solar to LLC Solar Farm Frezer Road.
And, uh, my, before moving on, my final comment there would be, on the cluster development piece specifically, um, that is not something that we need to necessarily wait through the entire one-year land development plan to make changes. Certainly, we looked at it a couple of months ago, but if the board, you know, instructed, instructed the manager to instruct me to bring that back, that's something that we could look at, you know, almost immediately. That's not something that requires a lot of study necessarily if you wanted to change that, so.
Well, I really think we need to look at the whole thing, and if it's a tire, move it forward, and not try to, you know, take bits and pieces out of it. Tell them, you're going to only let what you want it to look like, move it forward, and where you want it to look like certain ways, so if you keep doing it little bit at a time, I feel like we're going to prohibit what we really want in the end. We can always deny, or we can ask for, uh, in the buffer to commit not to do clusters on it, even when it's brought to it this big time. Is that not correct?
If, if, if it was a conditional use rezoning, the stipulation could be no cluster development.
I, I believe it would be an out of interest unless the board don't object to do it that way.
Okay.
All right, but now, item number 10, I didn't leave, we'll go ahead of it.
So this is a, a request for a six-month extension for a conditional use permit for a solar farm. Certainly, you've seen this scenario before. The solar farm development process involves a long negotiation with the utility provider in an area that can take many years. Uh, this is conditional use permit, CU 141102, that was issued for Spring Up Solar 2 LLC Solar Farm, is set to expire on January 5th, 2020, uh, but a six-month extension granted by this board would allow it to remain valid through July 5th, 2020. It is the 53 acres, the holly in red on the aerial photo in front of you there on spring, is owned by Dogwood Creek Land Holdings. Um, the most recent permit extension was granted back in June, and the project has continued to move through the required steps of the North Carolina interconnection procedures process with Duke Energy Progress since that time. Their most, uh, recent notable milestone was on October 29th, they received a facility study report that outlines the cost for the utility provider to upgrade the surrounding infrastructure to allow the solar farm to be interconnected, and currently the developers waiting the execution of that agreement, that would allow them to pay Duke Energy Progress to begin work on those upgrades. The applicant projects construction to begin in the second or third quarter of 2020, however, they note that that process is largely driven by the utility provider, and so they're somewhat at the mercy of Duke Energy Progress to, to complete those upgrades before they can move forward. A little background on the project, it originally came to you as a three-part solar farm, uh, Spring Up Solar 1 is shown in blue, the south side of the road down here, Spring Up Solar 2 is what we're talking about, holly in the red, and Spring Up Solar 3 is shown in blue right here. Uh, since that time, Spring Up Solar 1 project, the approval was allowed to expire, and the company's no longer pursuing that aspect. Uh, and since June, when you granted the last extension for this one, its sister project over here has moved on to a construction permit, and so it, it no longer needs those extensions because it has moved further into development process. The ordinance allows the board, as the permit issuer in authority, to extend, uh, the date that the permit remains valid for up to six months according to three criteria. Number one, the permit should not have yet expired, and certainly this one has not. Number two, the permit recipient must have proceeded with due diligence and in good faith. And number three, the conditions of the property have not changed so substantially as to warrant a new application. There's no limit on the number of permit extensions that could be granted by the board, it's entirely a group expression, and we do not need to hold, uh, an additional public here in order to take that action. So this is, uh, a one-motion process to either approve or deny the extension. Again, we extend it from the current expiration date of January 5, 2020, to July 5, 2020. The site plan that was approved shows three distinct areas of solar panels within that red area we were just looking at, and so just as a reminder, this is the plan for how that property will be developed once all the utility companies, herds have been cleared. And I'll be glad to take any questions about that extension that you have.
Why is, uh, Solar 3, you say is, is, is on the...
Solar 3 has a, a valid issued electrical permit for its construction, and so it no longer needs to, that takes the place of the zone of approval, so it doesn't have to go through these incremental extensions because it's further along in the process.
Is that, is this, is this a, this is a separate, own piece of property here?
Uh, it is, it might be owned by the same landlord, but it's being pursued by a separate solar development company.
Okay, all right. So six months ago, we, we extended both pieces, correct, is that right?
And now the one in blue on the right has moved beyond the point where it requires further extensions, but the one in red is still there.
Other question?
None but a comment.
Yes, sir.
Off a lot of extensions for one piece of property.
Sure.
As it off a lot of extensions for that one, one, one site there.
Well, seeing that, I'm confident, although, Mr. Le, if you know that it all is driven by the end power receiver, we have to...
Yeah, I understand that.
I know that very much, I didn't watch.
Maybe, maybe the extension is, uh, be 12 months instead of six.
Oh, I think we want that. Something we could look at, I guess.
Sure, that would, that would be an ordinance amendment. It's our ordinance that limits you to doing just six months. The idea is, if the board were to change its attitude about solar farms and decided it did not want this project to move forward, then it gives you an out every six months in case you change your attitude.
True. Four little days, Mr. Le.
Well, I don't agree with that.
That four days, they could also benefit.
Well, it's too many times coming for extensions, and just 12 months is not bad at, at all.
Well, initially, they get two years.
Right, you get two years first time.
And then it becomes a six month process.
You got to play a ball, I got six months, don't take long goodbye.
It doesn't take long for a year. Time moving fast, you know?
Go, do you have a comment?
No, sir.
All right. I didn't think of motion, uh, this time on this item, then.
So, then we can...
Have a motion to extend, there's a subject of that motion.
Sorry?
Uh, subject by Mr. Outlaw, any questions on motion, on the other motion, let me know on the say and I.
Uh...
Yeah, vote by like sign. Motion carries. That's what I'm saying. We move on to item 11, which is a exact county farm lease, not all of Sandy Hall this time, but we present it. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. So I'm here this morning about the Nash County farmland lease. Um, we have the two properties that were advertised, and we accepted the bids on Friday, November 15th. A farm lease bid was accepted on Friday, November 15th at 12:00 PM for the Farm Service Ag Track 12207 in Middlesex for the 60.62 acres. One bid was submitted and received by the deadline, Derek Vincent submitted a bid of $68.04 per acre. Um, that equates to exactly what he's been paying before. No bid was received for the farm track 12258 in Whittaker on Highway 48 for the 34.52 acres. So the recommendation is to accept the bid for, um, the track in Middlesex and then, um, seek, um, additional opportunity to advertise and resubmit for the Whittaker's property.
Okay. All right, uh, any question on the recommendation about, and the thought, maybe we need to explain a lot of acres to change here.
Okay, so we are following Farm Service Agency's acres to keep a consistency. Um, however, Middlesex had it down, um, previously as 55 acres because of the new road and I think there was a pile of dirt.
Some of the dirt, uh...
Right, some of that, but Farm Service Agency has not updated their records to indicate that there would be only 55 acres available for the farm, so we've gone by exactly what to keep a consistency and pull from the right place. So Farm Service Agency will have to look at that again and can make the changes, but have not made the changes at the time, so we reported that 60.62 acres. Hence why the bid is exactly what he's been paying.
Money, the money decides.
Saying.
But when, when it started, Charlie's told him it's 54 acres in that, that were all... all his equipment says he's tended. Some, some of that clear land that FSA's had on their record for years shows it's clear land, but it is. Some of it's grew up, some of it's got dirt filed on it, and he's actually not tended with the 55 acres. Some of it's not tenable, but FSA has not updated their record due to. So she's trying to use the same figures for legality that FSA says there is over there, which is not actually what you. When you say the same figure, with all you're saying, on the per acre figure or the total?
The total.
Total.
Okay.
You did it.
Correct.
But there was crops.
Growing on this.
Crops.
Say again.
The crops.
The crops that are grown on it? Are you asking what the crops are that they're growing on it?
Yes.
I'm not sure what that would be.
Solar may have a prescription.
Solar means.
It's what?
Solar means.
So.
Anything going.
I don't think they grew it in the back, but there is a little.
Other question?
Ms. Hall, is he okay with that, keeping this thing real rate and paying all those acres? Do you let his tenant less acres?
Yes, and he understood the consistency that we were trying to do. So if we give a change, and this will come up every two years, then it will, if we can get Farm Service Agency's records, we'll follow that and what they have.
Right. Other question? Entertained a motion to approve this one lease?
I'm going to motion approve this one.
Have a motion there's a second.
I'll second.
Second. Any question on the motion? All in favor of motion, let me know if you don't say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a lifetime? And Ms. Paul, my dear, received a call, or way to meet this board from the person that tended 48. Didn't understand the process, et cetera. I, I, I think you maybe have, make sure that you knew what to do, but it just happened.
Right.
If you, you just let me know when it goes back out, I will make sure that you have.
Yes.
Know that it's back out, and I'd like to receive at least one bid and then I put the person currently.
They misunderstood how the process is, and they've been.
You may be aware of that, I'm sure. They want to go this board and then make a presentation and get it done today, but I didn't feel like we should. I didn't like to let you do that.
Exactly. Exactly. So.
They.
Go through the process, and we're looking at, um, going through the process this month.
Okay.
Advertising, set bids, looking at December 19th.
Right. Just make sure that individual owner, not employee, knows that we didn't have a late call.
I know, exactly.
He brought her, that was true.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, I was saying, I want to get, said you recommend that to keep the bid reopened for the workers.
I'm.
We supposed to act on it, vote on it?
Uh, I don't think so. Well, tell me what you want.
I don't think so. I think we're just asking.
We just didn't have anything to avoid there, and she's going to re-advertise.
And then we'll bring it back in January.
Uh, this didn't want us giving that up, and I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Item number 12, uh, is a exact county Miracle Park at Coopers. Pax McGeeth going to make his presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, we are bringing to you an item regarding the Nash County Miracle Park at Coopers, specifically an agreement with the Coopers Community Development Corporation for funding programs. The Coopers Community Development Corporation has committed to raise $250,000 to fund capital improvements at the park. And in your packet is a copy of the agreement, which has been reviewed by the county attorney and, um, approved by the Coopers Community Development Corporation, um, November 20th publicly. And this formalizes this commitment, which would occur over five years, uh, but could be paid off prior to then, and Coopers Community Development Corporation, we expect to do that ahead of schedule. So my recommendation is to approve this agreement, which funds part of the, uh, Nash County Miracle Park at Coopers.
Any question on this? I know we've been working on it a little while. But I don't know if you have any questions to do.
Chairman, I would do for approval, do you agree?
All right. Uh, motion to approve, there's a second that motion. Second by Mr. Wales. Any question on that motion? All in favor of motion, let me know if you don't say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a lifetime? Motion is approved, and I, I think it's great. The one association is going to recount all that area as unusual, you know, individual, uh, nonprofit organization to be raising money, bringing to the county, uh, certainly that's a part of the money they have committed to. But they pretty much already got there, and they surely have a whole lot in the building for that park over there. In fact, if you make sure they understand, over great appreciation.
Yes, sir. Not enough good things could be said about their commitment to this project. Thank you.
Uh, um, now on item number, uh, 13, and, uh, just in time, uh, I'm going, this is the introduction of the new economic development director for Nash County. Uh, I would just say that the board is very excited. Uh, we haven't spoken along this day. Uh, it's, uh, item that we undertook about six months ago, and, uh, a very large, uh, and very important item that, uh, we are going to take a few minutes to celebrate, I guess you would say, or interview this gentleman this morning. And I know the board is very anxious to, to get this person started, but, uh, but I thought that you, I'm going to have Lieutenant to introduce, uh, Miss Hagg, and, uh, then we're going to take a short recess, about 15 to 20 minutes to welcome him to Nash County. Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, members of the board, um, department heads, and, uh, public. Um, this is a great day. Um, about six, seven months ago, the commissioners made the choice to, uh, to have our own economic development, um, department here in Nash County. Uh, we, we received, uh, over 70 applications. Uh, we had a, um, a screening committee, uh, go through those applications, uh, invite five, four or five people to, um, an interview, uh, got it down to two, and, um, uh, the screening committee recommended, uh, to the county manager unanimously, uh, the appointment of Andrew Andy Haggie as the new Nash County Economic Developer. Uh, he is currently the executive director at the Greenbrier Valley Partnership in West Virginia and has been there for three years. Uh, Greenbrier, of course, is, uh, where, um, there is quite a bit of, um, skiing and, um, development going on. Um, he's also, um, among his accomplishments in the three years that he's been at Greenbrier Valley Partnership. Uh, he's managed four new projects and expansions totaling $61 million and 325 new jobs. Uh, Mr. Haggie has a, an abundance of experience in economic development in Virginia, um, where he was a private consultant and worked on projects in Hopewell, Clarksville, uh, New Kent, Virginia, James City County, Fredericksburg, Norfolk, and Chesapeake, and, and many more. Uh, at this time, uh, we are happy to welcome, uh, Andy to Nash County and look forward to him joining our team on January 1, 2020. If we could at this time, uh, had you come forward and we're, we're excited to have you here and, uh, as the chairman said, we'll, we'll be able to all introduce ourselves to you personally in just a few minutes.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
I wasn't nervous until I just heard this.
Yeah.
But, uh, it's great to be here. Uh, it's great to, uh, have this tremendous opportunity. Uh, the Nash County has lots to sell, and especially with its buildings and sites and, uh, logistics and interstate port access and et cetera, everything you, you already know. And I'm, uh, I'm excited to get started to start marketing and selling Nash County. Let everybody know that Nash County is open for business. And I look forward to working with you, Zee, Stacy, uh, and the rest of the staff in, uh, you know, putting, moving forward Nash County's economy, creating jobs, capital investment, and of course, tax revenue for the county. So I look forward to it, and, uh, I look forward to meeting everyone after, during the break that I have not got to make. Uh, I want to thank the steering committee and getting to know them, and, as well as Zee and Stacy since then. But, uh, again, it's great to be here. It's a good day, and I look forward to, uh, starting in 2020 as a member of the Nash County team.
Thank you, sir. For if you've been here, uh, it may put you on the spot, so you can, yeah. Uh, changed here for the first time, but, uh, we, we wanted to test your ability to, uh, uh, present yourself without any others watching. But welcome to that guy. I think you will find it, uh, a very high place to work. We're very anxious to move forward. I'll be in the development department. Uh, we have a, a great reporter at here. While we look at the makers, which are like the talk to someone, I'm sure, and as well as all of the TV station that's present with us today. But, uh, with that said, I'm going to ask for a motion to, like you said, so we can just be a little bit more relaxed and interview myself to, for the one on the board or even revise the department. So, and what we have mentioned thus far.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, they have a 20-minute recess.
Okay. Have a motion, there's a second that motion. Second. All in favor of they are?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, uh, no, or they'll recess this time. Thank you. Lieutenant. Called the backboard this time, and I would call, we're now on item number 15. I'd call Donald Wood. Uh, we'll be later in a minute. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. Okay, the following budget amendments are being presented for the board's consideration for this year 1920. First one is cooperative extension. This budget amendment is to budget grant funding. Works on a state university, a master free volunteer program. It's $300. No county funds are required. Second item, this is an additional amendment to increase 100% non-cat federal funds to non-emergency Medicaid transportation client services. It's $5,279. No county funds are required. Next items with senior services. This amendment is to go with the grant proceeds for the North Carolina Department of Insurance for the seniors health insurance information program. It's $9,698. No county funds are required. Next item is with the sheriff's office. This budget amendment appropriates Nash County's portion of a joint grant application with the city wire key mount for 2019 Justice Assistant Grant, the JAG grant. The sheriff's office will use the proceeds to purchase alternate uniforms to be worn at special assignments and special events. These uniforms will allow high visibility with yellow polo, with sheriff and reflective led across the back. It's $14,664. No county funds are required. The next item is with the sheriff's federal asset forfeiture funds. This amendment's to budget funds for outfitting three vehicles and radios for six vehicles to be purchased with asset forfeiture money. It's $40,000. No county funds are required. The next item is required on the silver. This amendment's to budget increased funding for additional tap fees and installation. $15,000. No county funds are required. And final items with the health department. This budget amendment is to budget excess reserve funds to the North Carolina Community Care Network Incorporated pursuant to section 4b1 of the Pregnancy Care Management Agreement and section 3b1 of the Care Coordination Children Agreement. Excess reserves are being to be cash balances in excess of three months of operating funds for each program. These programs have been able to accumulate excess funds to do efficient operations within the Nash County Health Department. The program reimbursement is $261,877. No county funds are required. These are committed at the health reserves.
Okay. Any questions on item number 17 in a minute? Entertained a motion for approval? Motion for approval? Put it by Commissioner Outlaw. There's a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ripson. Any questions on that motion? All in favor of motion, let me know if you don't say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a lifetime? Let me know if it stands proof. All right, 15 is voted upon. Ladies, do we have any this one?
Board of members?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, the first one, um, is a vacancy that we've been working on, and I've not heard any word, um, about, uh, someone for the TDA. Is there any new information on that?
There's not.
Okay. So the next one is for the Farmers Market Advisory Board. We have terms expiring December 31st, 2019 for several of the board members. The cooperative extension director, Sandy Hall, is recommending that the following members be reappointed. Ricky Clarkson, Tim Bass, Joyce Kite, Vaden Hartley, and Fred Belt. Member Fran Faulkner Williamson is no longer active and is being recommended for reappointment by Joshua Praven. And member Paula Regus is no longer a market vendor and is being recommended for replacement by Freddie Howell. Both Joshua and Freddie's applications were in your packets.
Okay. Any questions on the farmer market board or any comments? Entertained a motion to approve those.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Freddie Howell to the former market board. And, and if you hold on.
I'm going to ask for a motion for the hold slate.
Okay, please, I'll change if you do.
Okay.
Okay.
Have a motion to approve the slate that presents, there's a second to that motion, I say. Second by Commissioner Bell. Any questions on that motion? All in favor of motion, let me know if you don't say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a lifetime?
Mr. Chairman, I've just passed our secretary, uh, uh, Josh, Joshua Parkin.
I'm sorry?
Right. I didn't see the R, but I thought, I know the.
I apologize. Okay, the next one is for the Agriculture Advisory Board. Terms expire on December 31st, 2019 for the following members. Steve Bass, Linda Fisher, and Brent Leggett. The cooperative extension director is recommending reappointment of all three of these members.
Questions or comments? Motion for approval? Motion to approve of Mr. Richardson's second. Second by Commissioner Bell. Any questions on that motion? All in favor, let me know if you don't say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a lifetime? Motion carries.
Okay, the next one is for the Brazos Memorial Library Board of Trustees. The term for Ricky Pitt expires, uh, December 31st, and the director, the library director, Catherine Roche, has recommended reappointment of Mr. Pitt.
Any questions on Mr. Pitt?
I'll recommend him to the board.
Have a motion to approve the real one, there's a second to that motion.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Outlaw. Any question on that motion? All in favor, let me know if you don't say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by a lifetime? Motion carries.
Okay, and the last one is for the Upper Coastal Plain RPO Transportation Advisory Committee. Annually, the board has the opportunity to look at the membership of the RPO. Nash County and Red Oak have permanent appointments to this committee, and the board of commissioners has the option of changing the other two appointments, um, the other two appointed municipalities, which are Middlesex and Spring Hope. The recommendation from our Upper Coastal Plain RPO Transportation Planner, James Salmons, is to reappoint both of these municipalities. is to reappoint both of these municipalities.
Questions on this recommendation? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to reform, that seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded. Next round, all questions on that motion? All the favor let it be known to say an a. Any opposed by the right side? Motion carries as well.
And that's all for the board.
Complete item seventeen will move right on into eighteen. Upper Coastal Plain will bring that up in that five-year old.
In the act here. No, sir, the next meeting is, I believe, third Wednesday in December.
And he didn't say, did we bring that three of the board that was there? I believe you did get the email from Stacy about the rest of the terms.
Yeah.
They expire from.
I guess.
Okay, all right. Like, go ahead with item number eighteen, shoot seventeen, which is to hold the board calendar for the twenty-twenty calendar year.
Yes, sir, the clerk to the board is required by law to have available for the public the scheduled meeting dates for each calendar year. In twenty twenty, there are two meetings that follow on holidays that need to be rescheduled. In addition, the March second, twenty twenty, regular meeting conflicts with the NACO Legislative Conference in Washington, DC. I have provided you all with a recommended calendar. I did work with Mr. Davis on a couple of these dates and sent a couple of emails out to you about, I think, the March date to make that Thursday, March the fifth. Instead of the following week, we had a conflict the following week. And I did hear from Commissioner Leggett that she does have a conflict for the January twenty-first proposed meeting date.
Okay, any other comment from board members? Mr. Leggett, what did you wish to try to do for that twenty-first?
I think I would probably stay on the back of that.
That's just like the biggest thing, I guess, that whole guy.
I believe so, yes.
You need to look at all of the things you like.
I'm only available at that.
I'll get a conflict that you laid up.
So the only, the only change to what was submitted was if we stayed January the twenty-first and that would be in March, it'd be March the fifth. Everything else is as given that.
And then we had September. There was a change in September.
September day?
Yes.
So that's good.
It seems like the commissioner's retreat was a week later last year, is it? Or am I wrong?
I think it was, maybe, I remember in like March twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh.
Yeah. I would ask that you consider the following week for that. I know Donna gets everything out as quick as she can, but the next week would certainly help us get our budgets.
The reason why we did shoot for the timing that we did, our clerk would not be available to be with us that following week. She will be at an annual conference.
For the whole week?
Wednesday, I believe it's, looks like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay. How many do you have, David, eighteen, nineteen? Or would you rather have it? We can have it even into April, early April. I really, that would help.
After you add it on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, which were a few different issues. Which is possible when we play this table.
Tuesday, April seventh, Wednesday, April eighth. Did you want to go to April?
That would be better for finance. You still have the April regimen.
On the fifth, on the sixth.
On the, on the sixth.
Sixth.
And then later that would have the commissioner's retreat.
That is good Friday, that Friday. I don't know what. The first and second is a possibility, Wednesday.
That work?
April first.
That'd be, that'd be fine.
Thursday, April second.
The week before, our regular meeting on the sixth would be, would be fine. At the end of that week. Second, third, first and second. That work for everyone? Either the first and second or second and third. Which would be Wednesday and Thursday or Thursday and Friday? Okay, Wednesday and Thursday, the first and the second.
Okay. All right, so never that change?
So could you go, we go through them now, make sure we've got them all?
Sure. So our first meeting of the month, January sixth. The second meeting in January, the twenty-first. First meeting in February, February third. No second meeting in February. First meeting in March, March fifth. The second meeting in March will be, or well, will not be March anymore. Will now be April first and second for the commissioner's budget retreat. Then the following Monday, the sixth, is your first meeting in April. No second meeting in April. First meeting in May, May fourth. Second meeting in May, May eighteenth. First meeting in June, June first. Second meeting in June, June fifteenth. First meeting in July, July sixth. No second meeting in July. First meeting in August, August third. No second meeting in August. First meeting in September, September eighth. Second meeting in August, September twenty-first. First meeting in October, October fifth. No second meeting in October. First meeting in November, November second. Second meeting in November, November sixteenth. First meeting in December, December seventh, and no second meeting in December.
Everybody good?
January was on the twenty-third and not the twentieth?
Correct.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, because the twentieth is, I believe, Martin Luther King holiday.
We approve that, entertain a motion to adopt each calendar as just read by Stacy.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Collins, subject by Mr. Wilson. Everybody okay? All the favor say a.
Aye.
Any opposed by the right side? Count stands for adopted.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on to the next item, would you go back to board appointments? Something I just overlooked.
All right, yes, sir.
Does the commissioner member need to be reappointed at this time? It looks like it does.
That's what we rule.
Yeah.
Or the RPO. Or the RPO.
I know normally that's a yearly appointment.
Oh, yes, sir. I apologize, I did fail to put that out there. Yes, we have our commissioner member, Commissioner Wayne Outlaw, that also needs to be reappointed.
Entertaining motion to free former Commissioner Outlaw with RPO. Subject by Commissioner Richardson, subject by Commissioner Wilson. Any questions on the motion? All the favor let it be known to say an a. Any opposed by the right side? Motion carries as well.
Thank you, Mr. Outlaw.
I'm sorry I overlooked that.
All right, good.
Um, the next item.
Okay.
I'm not going anywhere.
Item eighteen, where we're at, it will not be in the minimum rules of procedure for the board. They will need your facts to be reviewed.
And I provided you with a cover sheet that outlines the changes that were made. And then I had a phone call with Attorney Vince Durham that reminded me of another change that was made that I forgot to highlight for you. And that is your second meeting of the month, that the location of the second meeting of the month also be held in this room. That recommendation is considering the enhancements that the board made with audio and visual in this room and it being a public meeting and the tightness that we get sometimes in the back room with the number of guests that we have, that we would just like to recommend you consider having your second meeting in this room.
Seems to be not good.
It's, it's up to you.
I do understand the upgrade of the facility, yes. Any comments, questions on that? I do, wouldn't spot a large group in doing the committee room to get reports, but we can certainly do it here. Any objection to that? Any other questions? Do you want to go through those or?
You tell me, do you want me to go through them or have folks?
We got a few changes on there. Do you want, is it why I desire to go through them or are we okay with it?
Well, I'm not certainly going through those, but I got a few others that I would recommend.
This document, they're pretty simple, okay. All right, anybody need to go through any highlighted areas? Leave it at that.
I'm on page three. And I'm looking at regular meetings and second monthly meetings. Just asking a question, should there be some flexibility in here? And I know we would have to send out an advance notice if we change the meeting date, but should we so reference that in these rules of order? That would be my first question.
Let's take them one at a time. Do you want to have them turn it down?
What one would you specify?
Well, if you say here, like, what you have over regular meeting, a second monthly meeting on the third Monday of the month, and we already know that that's not necessarily the case to call upon, because one truth, I'm just saying, establish what the normal order of things is, but give yourself some flexibility so you can vary from the rules if you need to, proper advance notice. That for the regular meeting and the second meeting.
Well, is anything in here that makes the adopted calendar shoot, shoot what this is?
Okay, here, I don't know about that. We can add something to that statement.
I'd be glad to add a statement into those sections about the annual adopted calendar.
Okay, I'll let that be cleared as well.
I'm just offering these as short things that keep us without having any issues with our rules of order. I'm on page five, under A, Agenda nine A. It says the assistant county manager shall prepare the agenda. My question would be, why would we say assistant county manager or designate? Knowing that although Mrs. Chapman is very healthy and she's always here, there may be occasions when she could not be here to prepare the agenda, so I would add or designate. I realize these are minor points. I'll go over to page six now. At the top, it says a copy of the agenda packet is to be delivered. I would change the word delivered to provide it, because we would provide it in hard copy, but we really provide it through an iPad for the most part, but provide and cover both methods.
Yes, as we have.
You can have it just to do.
Maybe that's just the man.
What did you say?
I was thinking that we had that that way because of the statute. That's the way the statute reads.
And you say delivered would mean that's fine. Why you okay leave out that?
The statute covers that. And my next question along the same lines is how about electronic? Is there any mention in here of electronic? Or does deliver cover that as well?
If I had to give a rule about it, it would be included.
Well, if you just, the statute allows, if you made a minor wording change, then you wouldn't have to give a rule, it would, it would be covered. The next item is under Rule ten, says the assistant county manager again, and it doesn't give any flexibility for designate. My, the fifth item is down at the bottom of the page under three. It says powers of the chair to determine whether a vote shall be by voice, vote, or roll call. We probably should add in there a show of hands. I think from time to time we actually do that, maybe roll call would cover that.
Wouldn't that be a priority for the chairman?
It would be. My point of the special is it's not specified in here unless we are determined that roll call would be by a show of hands.
How buttoned you that show is?
And the last item that I've got, and yeah, I did not expect any change in this document today on this item, but I would send it to the, to the attorney and the manager and some others. And I'd like you to go in, I sent you a copy of Robert's Rules of Order when he talks about motions in ascending order of procedure. And it does talk about other types of motions, or the main motion, we have to yield those motions. So I'm giving that to the attorney and we just asked, I'm not looking at complicated things, but I just look at that and see if we should put something in there that would give us some opportunity for ourselves to keep motion on the main motion. That would be everything that I had to say regarding the rules of order, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Other comments? I feel like with the amount we've got here, we probably need to work this. Do we have anything need action on this day on that?
Just if you wanted to adopt these changes, but if you want me to go ahead and make the additional changes and bring it back to you at another time for adoption?
You're, we're going to get it all one time. I got a lot of that.
Okay.
One, two, four, five, oh, I saw that email. And of course, at the time we did, then, we did discuss the item you just brought up about substitute motions. So you are looking to, you suggest we may have to broaden the ability to have that substitute motion.
Well, I.
Any of any points with Rockford Rule, which does give you more.
Yes, sir, I'm not looking to broaden it out extensively, but I do think there needs to be some opportunity for a board number to offer a substitute motion, which the way I read it, and maybe I read it wrong, the boards would have to act on the substitute motion before they acted on the main motion.
Right, if you follow Rockford Rule, that is correct, but that's not what it currently says.
I know, I'm just saying, that just kind of, that just kind of takes away the ability of a board number to actually put a substitute motion or some motion out there before the motion's already been acted on.
Without the approval of the original motion maker.
It's a pretty simple procedure to offer a substitute motion to vote on. You don't have the main motion. Yes, right. And move back, which I would move last meeting out of order, and I was not. But I'm not looking to make a motion.
You were under our technical.
You are under the rule that I got to operate under.
Exactly. But I'm asking in terms of consideration, possibly expanding that we. I was not out of order.
You're correct.
But I didn't make no, sir.
No, I mean, you won't.
Disturbed out of, I knew I was not out of order, I just didn't say that.
Well, just to be able to understand that we go through the order when our procedures don't address the item, otherwise we don't go through the order. Therefore, and of course, we're putting our procedures ahead, the motion was out of order, but what the outlaw is suggesting we do, we change that. So the next time you would not be, so, just to be clear with where we are and how we got there. Oh, not a big deal.
And I understand how you're consistent with the rules that we've got, but I'm just offering this up as possibly an option to consider for future.
Right. And I have a strong feeling the way, I think the woman does need discussing to give direction on what we want to be doing. Which, when we're sitting here, so, he's one of, he understands what we're saying. The rules are set currently now, the only way you can make that substitute motion is to get approval from the original motion maker. And Rock's Rule of Order allows you to do that without that approval, which means if you have a vote on the substitute motion prior, going back to the hell of it. I think, Vince, you know exactly what Rock's Rule of Order says as it relates to, if something is made of an opposite outcome, would be out of order.
Yeah, I, Mr. Outlaw, sent it to the outback to look at it, but I like it.
Okay, all right, well, what we do then is just.
Well, you would definitely have an opposite outcome possible. If you vote on a substitute motion, I might, I might make, somebody might make a motion for A, and I might make a motion, substitute motion for B. Right, so you would have to vote on the B, and if I D passed, then obviously the A would have to play.
And I would caution you that we need to spend a little time looking at that prior moving forward. I know how stubborn that it can be and how they feed sometimes, that it can go on. It definitely all motion.
Well, you know, we are a body of seven, and I don't think that we should allow one person to decide whether or not we should add some type of substitute motion, because there may be a majority of our board that would be supportive of that. And I think you're really putting that person in kind of a precarious situation, a test for their approval to, to have a substitute motion. I mean, I really, I just, I think you eliminate that if you just put it in your rules of order.
Well, the same effect with me, though, if you add a motion, if majority wants it another way, you can take care of itself anyway. But again, I don't bring a kid right down to either way, but I think what you're saying, do you stop at that, a substitute motion or do?
With any rules of order, you do.
Okay, stop it at one substitute motion. What happens sometimes with this, we get them stacked at five D.
Well, all I'm saying is if I wouldn't make a substitute motion right, then I wouldn't make that motion. And then if this board decides they don't vote six to one against that motion, then I vote dead with that. But I at least want the opportunity and privilege to make that motion. And I think that, like, if Baylefield, S Y D would have liked to have done was had the opportunity to offer that motion, and then if we had voted six to one against it, then he'd have been fine with that.
True.
And I would have too.
What we do then is to give you a chance, so the governor, if you, or then ask, make sure we don't, several grounds, then it will be, and the recommendation comes back to us.
And another thing is that there can be amendments, up to two. But we don't, we really don't need to get into it, but, but you know, amendment, two, two amendments is the last. Amendment, well, when I say that, it's a great, all of them, yeah, it's wrong.
But I found rules allowed of that in current nineteen and sixteen.
But that's when you get into some complication and confusion, when you do a music amendment, amendment, somebody amend the amendment.
Well, the way it is now is a amendment to a motion must be determined to a substantive motion, but it may not achieve the opposite effect of motion, in which, what?
Amendments and substantive motions are like different things.
They are different, yeah, they are different, but yeah.
Well, well, all.
I just brought it up that you can't do amendment.
Okay.
And then somebody can amend the amendment.
That's right.
Just the chairman, I'll work with the attorney, he'll provide you all with the amended document to.
But I think we'll get all the other small changes done.
Right.
But this one, we'll, 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 we'll.
Okay, I'll be fine. Would you come with some recommendations? Okay, does that look good with everybody? All right, that was item number eighteen, we'll go to item fifteen. All right, we're good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Morning.
At this time, we have to leave the tax collector's report. It is decided to keep board chair in our activity in the tax collector's office. It is designed for informational purposes only and does not require, require approval. It's recommended that you accept the report so that it will be noted in the minutes. And of course, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions on the tax report? Do you know we'll move to item twenty, tax refund?
Okay, and we do have a couple of refunds that we need approval so that we can express those files.
You have the tax refund request? Any questions on those? Entertained a motion for approval?
Done. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Outlaw, second by Commissioner Baylefield. Any questions on that? All in favor, let it be known to say it out. Any opposed by all like that? Tax refunds are on route. Thank you, ma'am.